Good evening. Pam, please.
The time is 5:32 PM. The Board of Trustees are in regular session.
Would you please note that Ms. Robles is in attendance. Judge Alex Solis isn't in attendance. The title keeps getting longer. Mr. Uxer's on his way up. And myself. We have court. Mr. Snow, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to our March Board meeting. Item 1.4, approval of minutes, January 25, 2018, February 27. Is there more to approve? Second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay. Pam, we're ready.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Fierro? Mr. Fierro?
Aye.
Under open forum, we have Virginia. Because if I attempted to say your last name, I will butcher it. Please, welcome. And I apologize.
Sorry. The first one, please.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Sarata, members of the Board, Vice Presidents, and guests. I would like to take this opportunity to bring an issue to the Board that I think is very important. If our technician can load the PowerPoint that I have, you should be able to see on your screen my presentation regarding the arroyo at Mission del Paso. There you go. Thank you. Does this thing work? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. So, as you can see in this aerial satellite picture, this was where the campus was gonna be. But this picture is taken back in 1991. As you can see, there is no significant arroyo yet. And this is in 2002, once the construction was done of the first buildings and parking lots. And you can see the arroyo much better to the bottom of your screen. If I can show right over here. By 2005, the arroyo is moving upstream and becoming wider. And by 2010, it has reached all the way to I-10. In 2015, you can also see there are now side channels that are feeding into the arroyo, thereby making it wider and deeper. And as of January, which is the most recent picture I was able to get, you can see how much wider it is all the way through. And now, the agricultural field that used to be here is now buried under sand, sediment, and trash. Even though there is one no dumping sign, the college has used construction material to try to prevent further erosion, which threatens our parking lots. Unfortunately, some of the material that has been dumped is made of asphalt, plastic, rubber, which can leach into the ground, which is our aquifer, the wakeable sun, which is where we drink from, which is where plants and animals drink from. So, even if you have a filter on your house, in your faucet, you might still be eating plants or crops or cattle that are watered with the polluted water that you can have from this. This is the corner of the easternmost parking lot at the campus. And you can see the arroyo is literally inches away from the parking lot, despite the best effort. This is about 30 feet away from the arroyo. This is a crack, a fracture, in the parking lot, which runs the length of the parking lot, parallel to the arroyo, again, despite all the countermeasures that have been put in place. This was a view towards the end of the arroyo and the agricultural fields beyond that I took three months ago. And you can still see the cliff-like side of the arroyo on both sides. This was taken just yesterday. And you can see that side of the cliff has almost completely eroded. Another issue, which is also a concern for the Texas DOT, is that when the wire comes through the culvert under I-10, this is I-10 right there, it washes away all the DOT countermeasure. And you can see pipes that are exposed. And it even scrawls and removes the dirt under the culvert, which could possibly lead to a collapse eventually. But after I made a few calls to people that I know at Texas DOT, this is what happened yesterday. Or the past few days, they brought in loads and loads of sand and dirt to fill in. Again, this is putting a Band-Aid on a problem that we have. And I certainly believe that something needs to be done, not only by Texas DOT, because they only have the right way, but by the college to prevent further erosion. We need a permanent solution. We need to remove this construction debris, which is not good and not friendly to the environment, and find a permanent solution, a retention wall or something, especially in view of the new buildings, which are fixing to break down ground and send more water towards the arroyo. I also have a poster presentation. If any of the guests would like to see it, if you go to the second presentation, the Board Member and Vice Presidents can see that on their screen. And it gives you a little more information also. Again, this is really something that is close to my heart as a geology major. I understand how all this works. I don't know if maybe we need to revisit plans, talk to engineers, and have them talk to geologists. I don't know if any of you have questions, but I would be glad to answer them.
No, no. Thank you very much. Are you gonna leave this flash drive with us so that Pam can make copies and share with the administrators and the rest of the Board?
I'm sure you can, you know. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Who owns title to the land that the arroyo is on?
My understanding, according to what Mr. Victor told me when I brought this issue to him, he told me we don't own the other side of the arroyo. But I believe we do own this side, where the campus is on.
So, we probably own half. We own half of it. Something to the middle, something like that, huh?
Exactly. Maybe we can do anything about the other side, but we might be able to put a more permanent countermeasure on our side to prevent the parking lot or maybe even the buildings from falling into the arroyo eventually, as it grows bigger and bigger.
Did you do this as a project for your class?
It started as a project for my class. Yes, sir. As we were trying to determine what the layers were constituted of. And we discovered that it was mostly made of sand, silt, and clay. And basically, it's not structurally sound, you know? Water can easily just erode it. Every time a storm flows through it, it just carries away tons and tons of sand, undercutting the banks of the arroyo, which leaves mass of that sand and silt and clay overhang with no support. And eventually, gravity takes it down, which is how the arroyo has grown wider and deeper with every storm.
Well, as a registered petroleum engineer...
Yes, sir.
Well, my focus was geology. And let me tell you, this is an outstanding presentation. I think not only have you documented well, but I think your conclusions are valid, and they're very important. And so, I want to compliment you on this. And I think you deserve an A for your project.
And thank you again. Would you mind leaving the flash drive? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pam, item 1.7. Oh, would you please note that Dr. Graham is here?
Item 1.7, Presentations by Individuals, Groups, and Organizations. Item 1.7.1, Dr. William Sarata, College President, will present a certificate of completion from the Association for Instructional Research Data and Decisions Academy to Mr. Salvador Moreno.
Mr. Moreno, can you join me at the podium? Hey, Mr. Moreno, there you are. So, Chair Fierro, members of the Board, every year, we've had the opportunity for the last couple of years, two to three years now. How you doing, Mr. Moreno? To sponsor, through Achieving the Dream, one of our staff members in institutional research and analytical services to attend Data and Decisions Academy that's put on through the Association for Institutional Researchers, known as AIR in the field. So, this year, Mr. Moreno not only went, but successfully completed all of the courses that were required and has received the AIR Data and Decisions Academy Certificate of Completion. It actually occurred in the late fall. And so, we wanted to recognize him. He's hereby recognized for successful completion of foundational statistics for decision support overview of survey design. And we certainly had signed by Dr. Christine Keller, the Executive Director for AIR. Very proud of our staff and all of the work that they do. And, Mr. Moreno, congratulations and well done.
Item 1.7.2, Dr. Dolores Gross, Executive Director, Resource Development, and the Foundation for EPCC. Foundation Chairman Bob Snow and Vice Chair Patricia Marquez will present foundation updates and recognize recent funding partners. Lucy Michael, EPCC faculty, in honor of Dr. Emile Michael. GECU, Pride Industries, and Northeast Rotary Club.
Welcome, Dr. Gross.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Fierro, Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, and guests. And the Foundation for El Paso Community College is pleased to be here with you this evening to present to you a few brief updates and to recognize some of the Foundation's donor partners, which have helped the Foundation support student scholarships and degree completion. So, this evening, we'd like to share with you a few highlights. And I'd like to call up and recognize the Foundation Board Chair, Mr. Bob Snow, and then our Vice Chair, Patricia Marcus.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Gross. I really appreciate being here. First, before I begin, we have been before you a number of times. I cannot thank you enough and tell you what a great job the Foundation staff, Dr. Gross, and her entire staff, what the amount of work they do that makes our job on the Board so much easier. They have expanded the reach of the Foundation over this last year. And, Dr. Gross, and the entire staff, I just wanna thank you all. Bringing you up... Bringing you up to date on a couple of the facts. We're just... There's a lot of things going on. Our main job is to raise money. That's plain and simple. For scholarships, for EPCC. And what we're excited about, in looking back from the fall of 2014 till the summer of '17, we generated about a little over 1,000 degrees in certificates. We had a 44% graduation rate. And we understand that the students who come to EPCC, so many of them are working. It takes a little longer. But we are moving forward, and we're pleased with the progress that we're making. The cumulative GPA of 3.0. I remember being here about six months ago, when I think it was the track team was here, and they had a 4.0. I need more of them on this list. The next slide, under the scholarships, we're really excited. This is how we measure what we are doing. Since the academic year of 2009, more than $2.5 million has been awarded to over 1,500-plus scholarships. 73% of those are students who are with financial need. So, we're doing the job of getting money to the people that need it. But that's another area where I think your staff is doing a really good job. Getting out, talking to the schools, promoting what we are doing, what the college is doing. It's really key. We made some changes this year so that our audit will mirror the college's audit. So, the completion of the 2017 audit, we were on an annual basis. We're now mirror the college. We had our second annual fajitas and margaritas fundraiser. Now, our job is we go out and we simply promote the college and we ask corporations and individuals for money. We felt it was important that we start to get an event. And we're very pleased. The event is, for me, it's two things. We need to raise money, and we're able to match these funds against Starz Foundation. So, we're growing, and people are having a great time. But then, what I'm really excited about is we highlighted different areas of the college. And there's a lot of great schools. There's a lot of good programs here. But one that I've been excited about highlighting, and they've been great partner with us, is the culinary. And so, what more fun is to divide the culinary school into teams and have them cook margaritas and fajitas? I mean, how tough is that to bring people in? And we're very careful, not too many margaritas, a lot of fajitas. But we really have fun. And I went with one of the chefs to two or three TV stations to promote it. And it was just fun to watch him talk about his work. He's so proud of the work you do here. The next slide. I'm not gonna go into detail. Patricia and Dr. Gross are gonna go over this of the great partners we have to present to you today. But just the number, raising $160,000 from September till now. That's terrific. Oh, and by the way, before I leave, one thing I want you all to note. The next margarita and fajita event is September the 13th. So, we are already working on the Foundation Board on our fundraiser. We're already going out to talk to people about it. So, I want you to put it on your calendar. With that, I'll turn it over to my good friend, Patricia Marcus.
Just a couple of activities that the Foundation has worked on this year. The Foundation, that would be Dolores and her wonderful team, has hosted over 20 campus scholarship workshops through March of this year. And more than 300 students participated. We need more and more and more students to participate in these as we wanna give as many scholarships as we can. The Foundation also partners with Starz Scholarship Fund. We were able to provide $40,000. They matched $40,000. So, that's $80,000 for student scholarships for the 2018, '19 year, so. Dolores? You think you wanna go individually by contributors?
Thanks, Patricia. I'd like to mention some of the Foundation's funding partners that support students at El Paso Community College. This is our second year with Hospitals of Providence, a $35,000 installment of their $175,000 commitment to EPCC students. Our partner, Wells Fargo. And Wells Fargo this year funded $20,000 for student scholarships. And these are students coming out of the high schools, the dual-credit programs, or those early college high school students who have not yet completed their associate's degrees here at EPCC. We worked with all the school districts, contacted all the counselors, all the administrators in each of the districts, dual-credit faculty, did a mail-out to 500 individuals, did live workshops at some of the early college high schools, as many as we could get to, to get students applying for this available funding to finish their associate's degrees here at the college. Another one of our funding partners, El Paso Electric Company, funded $10,000 in unrestricted funds for student scholarships. They set no criteria. So, students were able to apply for this. And hopefully, they're applying as we speak. The deadline is April 1st. And now, we would like to recognize some of the donors who deserve much appreciation and are really building the future of El Paso Community College. One of them is one of our own faculty that you all know well, Lucy Michael. Almost Dr. Lucy Michael, who set up an endowment in honor of her beloved husband, Dr. Emil J. Michael. We're very proud to have this endowment fund at the Foundation in honor of Dr. Michael. Those two were quite an incredible team. Lucy in mathematics and Dr. Michael in the sciences. That little picture is a tribute to him and his stargazing. Many of us remember his astro notes that he would send out every Friday, teaching us all about the stars and the constellations and what to look for in the sky. And we know that he would be very proud of Lucy and his son and their effort in building this endowment in his honor. Thank you so much, Lucy. Next, we'd like to recognize another wonderful EPCC partner, our friends at GECU. GECU, as you know, has a beautiful branch at the Via Verde campus. And they employ EPCC students at that branch. They also are working on engaging our architecture students currently in helping to design future GECU branches. So, that is a conversation that began this week with our architecture program in GECU. And we'd like to acknowledge and recognize GECU and thank them for this $10,000 contribution for student scholarships. And here, we have Jackie Valdez, Ruby Alvarez, Carmen Guerrero, and Stephanie Queros. Thank you all very much. Our next funding partner, we're so proud to have them with the Foundation for EPCC. Rotarians, as you know, and in a little bit, we're going to recognize Mrs. Laurel Roberts. And Ernie Roberts, by the way, was a Rotarian. Northeast Rotary has been a consistent partner with the Foundation for EPCC for years. And they have supported students with $5,000 for scholarships. And we wanted to publicly thank them for their continuous and ongoing support for students in Northeast El Paso. And we have Leonard Olson and Jimmy Melver. Pride Industries is special to our hearts. Pride supports students with disabilities. These are important scholarships. We're proud to have them with the Foundation for EPCC. Pride is on Fort Bliss. They're here in El Paso, and they're supporting students with disabilities. And this is their second year with the Foundation for EPCC. And we're so proud to have them as a funding partner. And here from Pride, we have Jeff Bellis, who, by the way, has also been faculty at El Paso Community College. He was telling me that he taught algebra at the Mission del Paso campus. So, welcome, Jeff, and thank you. Thank you all for your time this evening. I wanna leave you with this thought. There's a tree that you may have noticed. It's been there for some time out in the foyer here of this ASCA building. That's an endowment tree. And we are going to be putting a leaf on there in honor of Dr. Emil J. Michael. And there will be others. But that's because a tree is a living thing, and an endowment is a living and lasting gift that will contribute to the futures of students in perpetuity. So, we are very proud to put Dr. Michael's name on that tree. Thank you so much.
Mr. Snow, Ms. Marcus, thank you so much for your leadership. Dr. Gross, thank you so much for all you do. Great presentation. Thank you.
Item 1.7.3, Ms. Aliana Apodaca and Ms. Laurel Roberts will present $14,000 from the Gifford Foundation and private contributions to the Dr. Ernst Roberts Endowment Fund in honor of Dr. Roberts' memory and dedication to the college in his over 40-year career at EPCC.
Hello, everyone, again. We had a special birthday this week. And it was in honor of Dr. Ernst Roberts, 40-year staff member here at El Paso Community College, who started as a faculty member at Logan Heights in what Laurel Roberts described as basically the size of a broom closet with four desks in it. And he served in many roles at the college, to include interim president. He developed many programs at the college, including the Leadership Academy. And this fund, we are here this evening to recognize Aliana Apodaca of the Gifford Foundation and Mrs. Laurel Roberts. Each of those individuals, the Gifford Foundation and Mrs. Roberts, are funding $7,000 each, for a total of $14,000, to bring Dr. Roberts' fund to $25,000. to bring Dr. Roberts' fund to twenty-five thousand dollars, so that it will also live in perpetuity in Dr. Roberts' honor. So we want to thank and recognize Aliana Apodaca, and a special thank you to Mrs. Laurel Roberts for keeping Ernie's memory with us and alive always. Thank you.
Well, we're just so happy that we can finally give you this last check. There's been many, many people besides ourselves that have given to this endowment fund, so we're just excited that we can now put this with the foundation and put this to work in Ernie's memory. We had a great time at his birthday party on Monday. The culinary school did a wonderful job, and Laurel was very wonderful in sharing all her memories about Ernie. What do you want to say tonight?
No, I just wanted to thank everybody who contributed and made this happen. I know how important this school was to my husband. It was everything. And he literally did start at Logan Heights. And his office was so tiny that you had to stick your hand in the drawer using the Braille method to find what was in there, because there wasn't enough room to open the drawer. And I don't know if you all know this, but Ernie's dad was the assistant commandant at Fort Bliss. And when the college needed land, he was the person who signed the document that allowed them to use Fort Bliss campus, and use the Fort Bliss, the Logan Heights area, for the start of our community college. So it was kind of full circle. I know that he was putting a lot of time and effort into the Fort Bliss campus, our branch there, and I'm hoping that's still going to go through, because that's one of the reasons he stayed at work up until the last day. He literally worked up to his last trip to MD Anderson. So I wanted to thank especially Dolores and her awesome staff. I can't tell you, looking at my husband's pictures has been very difficult. It's been three years now. And I just handed him the pink bag, and he said, "Here. You see his pictures and see what you can do with it." And Perla especially, I want to thank you. She didn't want to just put a slideshow together, she wanted to add text to it as well. So it was very, very nice. So thank you all. I know many of you contributed to this fund. A lot of you did payroll deduction. I'm not sure who all those people are. So this is a personal thank you from me. And I especially want to thank Aliana and her beautiful husband, Stafford, because it was her idea to have Ernie's birthday party. And originally, we were going to try to do like the fajitas and margarita kind of thing. But we were able to pull it off just the two of us to finish off the twenty-five thousand bucks. So thank you all very much.
You know, Sir Roberts, you're being very, very modest. If you ask any of the board members, Dr. Sarata, Dr. Roat, I couldn't remember his name, they will tell you that Fort Bliss would never have gotten to the point it is today without Dr. Roberts.
Okay, great.
And so, by all means, you're being way too modest.
It meant everything to him, because you see, it's a full circle.
Yes.
And if it hadn't been for Fort Bliss, we wouldn't have a community college here, because you didn't have any place to go. And I don't know how many people know that, but I still remember the broom closet that was his office.
Now, Dr. said at the ass that these checks be made in his name, so I give them to you now?
Give them to Dr. Gross.
So who gets the checks now? Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Item 1.7.4. The Student Success Corps Team's Equity Group will present the EPCC Equity Statement and is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees to adopt the Equity Statement.
Good evening, Chairman Fierro, Board of Trustees, Dr. Sarata, guests, community members, and colleagues. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you this evening. I'm Lucia Rodriguez. I am the co-chair of the Equity Committee, and other members are present here. In the Equity Committee, we have representation from the Student Success Corps Team, from cabinet member, dean, faculty from across the district, from the Center for Students with Disability, from diversity programs, career services, Office of Student Success, marketing, and we have a Student Government Association Student Representative also that will present with me, Brian Mena. So fifty years ago, about fifty years ago, at the height of the civil rights movement, the people of El Paso activists took action to create a college of the community. They felt that they were convinced that if El Pasoans had equal access to higher education, they could take care of their families. It would be good for families and for the community, and they were right. So fifty years later, here we are. And it's so exciting that on the fiftieth anniversary of our college, we are talking about the topic of equity to take us into the next fifty years. Equity is a national movement in community colleges. As you know, El Paso Community College is an Achieving the Dream College. And Achieving the Dream has a tool called the Institutional Capacity Assessment Tool, which assesses our strengths and shortcomings in several different areas. And several hundred employees of the college took the ICAT and found that equity and the use of data were two areas that we needed help with. So being that equity is a national movement, we're so excited that we're part of that. And equity is envisioning what kind of college we want to be. It's looking at policies, practices, and behaviors through an equity lens. So equity does not mean treating all students the same. It means giving students the help that they need in order to succeed. Equity requires that we ask ourselves, are we at EPCC unintentionally creating barriers for particular groups of students, especially underserved students? Is each student receiving what they need to be successful? Are policies or practices required for students, or are they recommended? And as we know, students don't do optional. So we're looking at practices, are they required or are they recommended? Is there an intentional design for our college experience? So equity is a shift in how we think. It is evolving from only asking, are students college-ready, to asking ourselves, are we student-ready? Is our college student-ready? So the Equity Group charge is to create opportunities for deeper conversations about equity and engaging the entire college to reflect, to take the time to assess, and take action steps to remove barriers, and develop action plans that lead to success for all students. Along the way, we hope to contribute to reaching the Sixty by Thirty Texas Strategic Plan to increase educational attainment in Texas and in El Paso. So the Equity Project will involve everyone at the college. So it's a big, huge project, and the way that we have taken it on as a committee is that we have three different approaches to looking at equity. And one is, the first one is leadership and vision. So leadership and vision. What we set out to do is to form a common understanding, a definition of equity, which I think you all have there in front of you, our Equity Statement. The second one is engagement and communication. Once you approve our statement, we hope to engage everybody at the college. We are going to, we've been as successful in having equity as a theme for our Fall 2018 Faculty Development Week. And the third part of equity that we are going to do is we are going to look at all our policies, procedures, and practices. And we are going to ask, does the college consider equity when proposing and evaluating all policies and practices? So we are here today to seek your approval of our Equity Statement.
Thank you very much. And first and foremost, I want to thank you for all the work, Rodriguez, you and your committee have done. Really, a detailed statement that you've written. I'm going to ask that the board table this until the April Board Meeting. There's nobody who supports equity more than the board that we have right now, which I wholly believe. But there is some input that wanted to be interjected into our thoughts by a couple of board members. So I'm going to ask that we table this and put it back on the agenda for next month.
I'd like to give our Student Government Association rep an opportunity to also share how students will also be looking at equity and how they've already started to address inequities.
Please.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the board, Dr. William Sarata and presidential cabinet and guests.
See, that microphone was made for me.
So my name is Brian Mena. I'm currently the Vice President of Student Government, and I'm also serving on the Equity Committee. So in a world where everything has a price tag, sometimes the financial burden of being a student can be a little too much, especially for certain students. So the Student Government Association of El Paso Community College has addressed inequities for students of lower socioeconomic statuses by opening the ton of food pantry, starting the emergency book loan program, and also by drafting a resolution to support the open educational resources. And so, as a body that advocates for students' needs, it is our duty to put equity at the forefront of every conversation and everything we do. And so, we strongly urge the Board of Trustees to consider adopting the Equity Statement to start this conversation and to really begin, you know, this journey of addressing inequities and being more equitable. And so, thank you so much for your time.
No, thank you. Dr. Sarata, can I ask you, please, if we could set a timeline to where the board, if they have any questions or concerns or input on this statement, be given to you so that we can get it to Mr. Rodriguez and the committee in time for them to consider by our next board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Graham, you had a question?
No, I didn't. I had just asked about the Native Americans. I think that that's another population that's not reflected on this.
Okay, and we can add that into our suggestions. And again, get them to you with plenty of time for you to, in the committee, to digest them and consider them for us to consider it on the April Board Meeting. And thank you so much for all your work and your vision and your passion.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.5. Optional presentations will be made by the Presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, the Faculty Association would like to address the topic of being ready in case of an active shooter. And prior to me saying anything else, I would like to go ahead and say that we are very proud of our EPCC Police Department. We believe that they are outstanding. They have worked very hard to create trainings that they went out of their way to make available to faculty as well as our students. They also, in the training that I was involved in, were very intentional about making sure they invested themselves in answering everyone's questions. This is not in any way about our police. But we do want to talk to you about a system. And to use myself as an example, I completed this training two years ago. At the time I completed it, for me, it was optional to go through the training. In the two years since, I've never gone through any refresher, and there's never been any drill or practice to see if I would be able to apply the skills that the Police Department shared with me. I do not think that I am the only faculty member for whom this is true. And so, on behalf of the faculty, we would like to request that we study the system to make sure that it does what we think it would do, that we check to make sure that every student and every employee has gone through the training, that periodically we insist that that training is renewed, and that we test every so often in drill to make sure that everyone would do what we have trained them to do. Tonight, I've also invited Dr. Josh Hevret. Dr. Hevret is a member of our faculty at the Cotton Valley Early College High School in the History Discipline. He is also a Columbine survivor. And I asked him to share his perspective with you tonight.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to say a few words about my experience. But before I begin, let me thank all of you for all that you do for our students, for our faculty, and for our staff. It is a privilege to work at an early college high school that is attached to this amazing institution. I was a senior at Columbine High School in Littleton, Colorado, on April twentieth, nineteen ninety-nine, when two of my classmates entered our school with sawed-off shotguns and semi-automatic rifles. They murdered twelve of my fellow students and one of my teachers, a wonderful man named Dave Sanders, who was my business law teacher that last semester. I am here tonight to stress the importance of school safety and crisis readiness. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, I served on the Jefferson County Public Schools Columbine High School's Home District Youth Advisory Council. We met on a monthly basis to discuss relevant issues with the district superintendent. And on April fifth, nineteen ninety-nine, fifteen days before our tragedy occurred, we met to discuss school shootings and readiness. I laughed. I said, and I will never forget these words, "This will never happen at Columbine High School, ever. It is impossible." Fifteen days later, I was proven wrong. We had no idea what to do. The police had no idea what to do. The SWAT team had no idea what to do. People died because nobody knew what to do. Dave Sanders bled out in front of his students because nobody knew what to do. And I sat in my parents' living room watching the news roll in about my friends who died, knowing that just fifteen days earlier, I thought that this was all a joke and that it was impossible for it to happen to us. I urge this board and our members of our excellent law enforcement team at EPCC to continue to do something. Do not make my same mistake. Please take this seriously. We need a plan. We owe it to our current and our future students to be ready if this happens to us. And it might. I don't want to seem hysterical, I do not want to sound overdramatic, but it might happen to us, and we cannot be caught flat-footed. Especially since our state has made it the law that we allow concealed firearms in our campus, we must have a plan. We must attempt to limit the chaos. We must try to save as many lives as possible. It is our responsibility, it is up to us. Thank you so much for your time, it is a privilege to address the board, thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that story. And, Miss Bell, thank you for being proactive. And we have asked Dr. Sarata to ask the chief and Dr. Hiron to give us a presentation of the status of that plan that you're talking about. And so, hopefully, after we see that presentation, we can give some more input and work together on a plan where the testing and the practice and all of that comes into play. I'll just share with you, my nine-year-old daughter taking her school a couple of weeks ago, and she happened to, out of the blue, say, "Is that going to happen at our school?"
Okay.
It's a reality, it's not, so thank you again for sharing your story. And, Miss Bell, thank you for being so proactive.
Thank you so much for listening, we appreciate your time.
Mr. Fierro?
Yes, Dr. Graham?
I think that this needs to have a timeline. That should be the first thing that we request, because I think we've had presentations, we've talked about it. I know I can look back through my minutes, but I know I brought it up probably two years ago, and we haven't moved forward with it, as far as I know. You know, and the systems are critical. We just had an evacuation of two schools because of a gas leak. And it's an elementary right next to a middle school. And, you know, when you're moving two thousand people, even if they're little people, you have to have a plan, and you have to have the systems in place to secure everybody's safety. And many times, I've asked employees, "If there was this incident happening, do you know what to do?" No, they, you know, they have no clue. And maybe we do have a plan, but if the staff doesn't have a clue, and they're the ones that are going to be at the forefront of whatever, anything that may happen.
You're absolutely right, I agree with you.
Yes, and we've got to have a timeline as to, okay, forget another presentation. The first thing we need is a timeline. When is this going to happen? When are the drills going to take place? How are we going to roll out the plan? So everybody knows about it. And if we need help from other entities, by all means, we can get it for the college, but we've got to move it forward.
Thank you very much. Dr. Sarata, will you work on a draft timeline for our next board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. As always, thank you for having us here, Chair Fiero, President Sarata, members of the board. Sorry. First and foremost, I would just like to say thank you for supporting the food pantry. And this is just a wide thank you to every single one of you in this room for being so proactive and for reaching out to us in ways that we can expand our food pantry and make it more effective. We're really thankful for that, for all the support that we've been getting these last couple of weeks. I just want to talk a little bit about, I'm nearing my last board meeting, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about my goal. When I was running for student government, I wanted to increase civic engagement and political participation among all our students. And I feel really proud about the strides that we've made in that direction of advancing civic engagement. And first, most importantly, I wanted to make it SGA's mission to advocate for underserved and underrepresented communities here and within our college, to be the voice of the voiceless in a sense, and to help empower those communities. So today, I'm here to just give you a brief rundown of the things that we've done. Brian and I were both Voto Latino fellows this semester. We registered over 500 students to vote, both here at EPCC and at UTEP, which doesn't seem like a lot, but in El Paso numbers is really, really a big impact. The debates that we scheduled all through last month were really, really successful. We had a really great showing at the US Congress debate. We had a lot of media presence, and it was honestly really, really exciting to get a chance to ask questions of the candidates and to get to talk to them a little bit. Another thing that we participated in recently was the walkout for DACA. So, Soñando Juntos is an entity, is an organization that started at UTEP, and it seeks to address the problems that undocumented students face. They reached out to us here at EPCC to have a walkout in support of a Clean Dream Act. As you know, we're, our Dreamer students are still in the limbo as far as that policy. So we just wanted to show our support and to let them know that they are cared for and that student government is here to address any issues they might have. Another, another event that we had just last week, we had the Students Forum in Keeping Our Campuses Safe. It was a conversation in coalition with the Senate, I mean, with Senator Jose Rodriguez, the Youth Advisory Committee, El Paso Community College Student Government, UTEP Student Government, as well as high school students from different backgrounds. It was a really successful event. We had a pretty good, a pretty good showing of people, and we were able to address the issue of school safety, not just in regards to school shootings, but in a broader sense. We also included our immigrant students. We included cyberbullying in that conversation. But the topic at hand, at the heart of it, was definitely gun reform and keeping our schools safe. We will be having a follow-up event in the anniversary of the Columbine shooting, and we would invite you, we would like to invite you all to be there, to keep the conversation going and to actually do something and not just talk about something. And to kind of just segue off of that, I had the pleasure to be, I was invited to the March for Our Lives, which happened last weekend. I was invited to speak at the event. It was really awesome. And it's just really moving to see so many students become involved and to stand up for, sorry, to stand up for the things that they believe in. It makes me really proud. Another thing that we've done is we've supported, sorry, it's just that the story was so moving. We've supported an initiative that came out of Senator Jose Rodriguez's office. It's called Veterans Dress for Success with donations and setting ourselves up as a drop-off location. Basically, the purpose of the initiative is just what it sounds like. We are collecting professional clothes that we can pass out to veterans in need so they're able to join the civilian life more easily. Another thing is, we will be having, we are having SGA elections currently, so I'm really excited to see who comes after me and who we get to, who gets to bug you next year in regards to the board meetings, et cetera. One thing that I do want to bring up is, we have had concerns on behalf of the clubs and organizations at our school in regards to the travel policy, which we have in place as of right now. So the six-hour drive, if you are familiar with it, we believe that this policy is very limiting of our students' experiences. It is limiting, it limits our students in participating in activities that support and expand their educational experiences. We would like the policy to reflect multiple drivers that can go further than six hours. This policy as it is in place now is very detrimental to our clubs as they do not have the budgets to secure commercial flights or drivers to go in a bus. As you know, they work very, very hard to fundraise every single day, every single week, and they have earned every penny that they have in their accounts. And we don't want them to suffer because they want to go to a convention that is seven hours away from El Paso. We are so far away from everything, and we hope that you will reconsider this policy and lift those restrictions. Here with me is Paul with the Automotive Club. He's going to say a few words.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm not up on my parliamentary procedures, so please bear with me. A little about myself, so you can put a little weight behind what I'm going to ask. 28 years working in the automotive field between the civilian world and 20 years in the military. I just retired. I'm a full-time student, but at the same time, I'm a master automotive technician full-time at BMW of El Paso, so I know a little bit about the automotive world. The SEMA event, all right, the Specialty Equipment Market Association, which is the big thing that the Automotive Society goes to or tries to go to each year, is the thing that anyone who wants to be a mechanic, to an automotive technician, to just working at a parts counter, this is where they need to go. This is the place that shows you what's coming, how to prepare for it, what you need to do, the tools you're going to need to go and buy, right? This is the show. It's in Las Vegas. It's 11 hours away. The current restrictions, we can't attend unless we fly. That'd be an extra $2,500 this coming year, 2019 is the next one we're planning on going to. $2,500 just for the tickets. All the math's already been done. It's $2,500 extra versus renting a van, two instructors go along, six hours apiece, we're there with a break in between. So we're just asking if you could reconsider, if not just for our club, for all the other clubs that spoke with the young lady, who are supposed to have a bigger turnout today, and they didn't really show up. Other than that, that's what I had to present.
Well, thank you for your service, first and foremost.
And just to kind of close it off, we will be traveling to Austin this next Wednesday for the state convention. As you know, we are the host representative on the executive board at the state level. It's called the Texas Junior College Student Government Association. We're really excited about that. We are flying, since it's about, what, 12 hours?
Eight hours.
Eight hours. Well, I don't know where I'm going, but taking the long way. So thank you for your time again, and thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns.
Well, thank you for your leadership, and you're leaving some big shoes of field. So thank you again for the great year.
Thank you.
Can I, can I make a reminder that you were going to at some point try and work with your group to see if you all can come up with some ideas that will help us with the recruitment efforts?
Yes.
Student recruitment efforts? I just don't want that to be forgotten so we can bring it back to the forefront. I know you're leaving, but...
Yeah, I mean, we did bring it up, we did address it a couple of board meetings ago, but we will talk to the recruitment office to see what we can come up with together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.9, Board of Trustees Business. Item 1.9.1, the Board of Trustees will hear the appeal presentation of Ms. Nita Corral-Nava.
Can I make a comment on 1.9?
1.9, yes.
I just want to make sure the board knows that we, we had worked on the legal request, the proposal. So we've given some information to Ruben, and he's going to be looking at it and trying to move it forward, but I think we've got some consensus on what we're going.
On your committee?
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Item 1.9.1, Ms. Corral-Nava, you have the option of doing your presentation in open forum or executive session. It's up to you. What would you prefer?
I can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Would you mind coming to the microphone? Good evening, thank you.
I believe I shared that it be in closed session.
Okay, it's fine. Pam, would you please call us into executive so we can address this item?
The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. Consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice, or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation, or for any purpose authorized by law. Discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Consideration of specific personnel matters. Discussion about security, personnel or devices, or discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matter is permitted for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. The time is 7:43 PM. The Board of Trustees are reconvened in regular session. Item 1.10, Board Reports. Item 1.10.1, Treasurer's Report, February 28, 2018, no action is necessary. Item 1.10.2, President's Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. Sarata will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at the college.
Chair Fiero, members of the board, I'd like to remind you that the groundbreaking for the new buildings that we are building at the Vaivert de Campus will be held on Wednesday, April 11, at 10:00 AM in the breezeway between the architecture building, Building Z, and the A building. The El Paso Community College Diversity Program's 2018 Men's Forum will be held on April 19 from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the Vaivert de Cafeteria Annex and Courtyard. I'm happy to report that the Joint Review Committee on Education and Diagnostic Medical Sonography, say that fast, reviewed and accepted the DMSO Program's Annual Report in February 2018. There were no recommendations for change at this time. Congratulations to Program Coordinator Nora Valderas and Clinical Coordinator Eloy Tienajero for your dedication and great work on the report, as well as thanks to Dr. Paula Mitchell for your leadership and oversight of the program. EPCC's Rise to the Challenge Bridge Program was featured in the March 2018 issue of the Insight into Diversity Digital Publication. As you remember, EPCC was the recipient of the 2017 Heeds Award as one of three institutions dedicated to connecting students to their successful careers by facilitating hands-on experience both inside and outside of the classroom. The RISE program was featured as a program that successfully recruits, graduates, and prepares science students through hands-on research. Dr. Karina Castillo, a former RISE student, who is now a full-time chemistry faculty at El Paso Community College and a research mentor of award-winning RISE students, Itzel Tejada and Zaira Dorado. Congratulations to those students, as well as to Dr. Maria Álvarez, the RISE and Build Program Director, and to Dean Rick Webb for the great recognition. The Northwest Campus Library was awarded the Library Instruction Project of the Year by the Texas State Library Association. The Teachership Academy Project Embedded Librarianship, submitted by Laura Lee Ambries, in collaboration with Michael Duncan and the English Discipline at the Northwest Campus, won the award this year. The award will be presented at the Texas Library Association Conference in April of this year. Congratulations to Ms. Ambries, the Northwest Campus Head Librarian, Dr. Michael Duncan, our English faculty member, and the English Discipline faculty at the Northwest Campus. Special thanks and congratulations to Dr. Lydia Athena, the Northwest Campus Dean, who along with the Teachership Academy Steering Committee is celebrating their 10th anniversary this year. The Senior Adult Program hosted their 23rd Annual Love Conference on February 27 here at the ASC. The event brought in 600 seniors and 45 agency exhibitors, who were treated to a keynote address by Ms. Rosa Guerrero. Awards were presented to EPCC faculty, including Super Senior of the Year to Ms. Aina Holder, Volunteer of the Year to Ms. Corky Rodriguez, Singer of the Year to Mr. Ryan Gonzalez. The Oldies But Goodies singing group was also presented with an award. Many thanks to Ms. Mary Yáñez, the Senior Adult Program Director, and her staff for the great work, as well as to Dr. Farias for your leadership and support of the program. On the 26th of February, the Skills USA competition took place at the Vaivert de Campus Advanced Technology Center. Approximately 140 students participated from the El Paso, Esle, and Socorro School Districts. Several EPCC programs participated, including Culinary Arts, Automotive, Cosmetology, and Business. Thanks to Dr. Olga Valerio, the ATC Dean, for hosting the competition and positively impacting so many area high school students. Many thanks to our faculty who continue to volunteer and give of their time to serve our community and showcase our programs. Dr. Jaime Farias, thank you again for your leadership and support on this program, which is much appreciated. On February 19, the Trans Mountain Campus hosted the 19th Annual Spirit of the Star Day Celebration. The annual event, which commemorates the birthday of Texas Iwo Jima Day and President's Day, was sponsored by the City of El Paso Sunrise Neighborhood Association, Irvin High School Band, West Texas Young Marines, and El Paso Flags Across America. The presentations included the reading of state proclamations from Governor Abbott, celebration ladies from First Lady Cecilia Abbott, Lieutenant Governor Patrick, and House Speaker Joe Strauss. More than 80 high school and EPCC students participated in the event. Many thanks to our faculty members, Vanessa Camacho, Jerry Navarro, and Ms. Park, as well as to Ms. Jan Evler, our Trans Mountain Campus Dean, for your work and commitment on another and successful event. And finally, chair members of the board, in your documents, you have the Hispanic Outlook on Education, which once again has, for the 11th year in a row, has ranked El Paso Community College as the top community college in the nation for granting the most associate degrees to Hispanic students. We're on the cover. Kudos to Carrie Mo and her team, who worked on this diligently, and to all of the faculty and staff at El Paso Community College for ensuring that we continue to be ranked first in the nation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for making the district proud again, Dr. Sarata.
Item 3.2 is the only item on the consent docket.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxser?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 2.0, Administration None. Item 3.1, Full-Time Institutionally Funded Actions.
Move to approve 3.1 and 3.3?
Second.
Did she say 3.?
3.3.
Oh, okay, there's no action required on item 3.3.
Did I second it?
Any questions? Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxser?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 3.3, Information Items, No Action Is Required. Item 4.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Purchase Services and Audio-Visual Equipment for the Conversion of 26 Classrooms into Technology-Enhanced Classrooms from Access Communications Group, LLC, in an Amount Not to Exceed $348,662.
Move to approve 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3.
Second.
Second.
Any question, oh, please read them, Pam?
One second. Item 4.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Purchase Services and Accessories for the Infrastructure and Conversion of 26 Classrooms into Technology-Enhanced Classrooms from AC&amp;J Communications, Doing Business as Metro Comm, in an Amount Not to Exceed Item 4.3, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of the Renewal of an Annual Contract for Maintenance and Support for Software from AdAstra Information Systems, in the Amount of $55,000.
Questions?
I just have one, Dr. Hiron, so it's a conversion for 26 classrooms, and how many more do we have to, do we need?
This will bring us, I'm sorry, this will bring us a total of 178 classrooms that we will have completed, but I'm going to have to defer to Ms. Nancy Gómez, who's keeping track of how many additional classrooms are left after this phase.
Ms. Gómez, would, would you let us know? As Ms. Gómez comes up, these are the existing, current existing classrooms. As the board, as we move forward with the master plan, again, kudos to Dr. Hiron and her team, as well as to the board, who's insisting that the classrooms that we have come up in the new facilities will be up to speed. So the FFNE, they will be smart classrooms, that is the intent, for all of the classrooms that we're building in the 400,000 square feet.
So we're only addressing the words that are...
That is the goal.
These are the existing classrooms, and Ms. Gómez can tell us how many classrooms will be left after we convert these 26.
Hello, this is my first, I'm sorry. We started off this project with about 380 classrooms needing to be converted. At this point, we're at the 178 with the approval of these classrooms, which will give us about, close to 290 classrooms that would still need to be converted.
And, and our objective is to convert all 290?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we don't have any that we're there using as study halls that might not...
No, these are actual classrooms. These are actual classrooms.
What's our timeline to have them all completed?
Depends how much funding you give them.
Well, again, the funding is allocated. The IT Committee makes that decision and Ms. Rebecca Bell was here earlier, so the IT Committee is the one identifying the classrooms that need to be converted. And just for your information, not all 26 classrooms have to be fully converted. Some of them already have some equipment, so some of them are partially converted.
Do we still have a, a long ways to go?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No, we're ready, Pam.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxser?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.4, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Three-Year, Three-Year Contract for Financial and Compliance Audit Services for the Fiscal Years Ended August 31, 2018, 2019, and 2020, in an Amount Not to Exceed $207,000.
Move to approve 4.4 and 4, 5.1?
Second. I have a question, Chair.
Let, let Pam read 5.1, please.
Item 5.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Award a Contract to Pride General Contractors LLC for Construction of Offices for the Purchasing and Contract Management Department at the Administrative Service Center, A Building, in an Amount Not to Exceed $299,657.
Ms. Solis?
Yes, so, I mean, just reading the actual agenda, item 4.4, to me, it looked like we, you know, we're, the board is, administration requesting the board to approve this, a three-year contract, but if you go and look at the notes or the agenda, the supporting documentation, it's actually a renewal of the contract. It's a one-time renewal of this contract, is right, Ms. Shonzi? And I, I guess, is that right?
Okay, so, when the RFQ was issued three years ago, it contained a, an option to renew the contract for an additional three years if we were satisfied with the service, which we are.
Okay, so I'm just curious, again, syntax, why wouldn't the actual request be not to approve a contract, but to approve the renewal of the contract of, of this existing contract with Penya and Brionas?
Here you go.
I said judge coming out.
Talk to purchasing.
I, it says we're doing one thing, then you look at the, the background information and it says, really, we're renewing a contract that we've already approved.
And, and I apologize, I should have caught that, so it is, it is a renewal of the contract.
All right, so with that, if the board's okay, may we adjust, or clean up the language of the motion, or?
We can do that.
Okay.
Ms. Robles made the motion, do you mind if we change the motion, Ms. Robles, to renew the contract?
And not, not at all, go ahead and, and approve the renewal.
Okay. Mr. Uxser?
Dr. Graham? Dr. Graham's second, so we're, we're set.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Solis.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxser?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero? Item 6.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of a Grant Award from the Texas Workforce Commission in the Amount of $21,000.
Move to approve items 6.1 and 6.2.
Item 6.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of a Grant from the National Endowment for the Humanities to Digitalize Photographs and Historical Documents of the Settlers of Colonia Juarez in the Amount of $12,000.
I have a question, where do we get these photographs?
Oh, don't, don't, don't run, don't run.
Run, run, run.
No.
Hi, I can answer that question. They're going to be, actually...
Could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, yeah. You don't know, I'm like Cher.
There you go.
Just kidding, I'm sorry. I'm Lisa Elliott and I am the Principal Investigator on the grant, or is that right? Okay. So we're going to be, they're going to be given to us by the members of the Mormon colonies. So we're going to be digitizing their memorabilia and giving a copy of it to them for them to keep, and also putting it on as a library guide, a lib guide here at EPCC, and making it part of University of North Texas's Portals to Texas History.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Did you write the print?
I did, yes.
Oh, wow.
Well done, thank you, Ms. Elliott.
Looking forward to seeing it, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles? Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxser?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero? Item 7.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Continuing Education Tuition Rates for Revise Courses.
Move to approve?
Second.
Questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxser?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero? Item 8.0, Community Services None. Item 9.0, Unfinished Business.
Pardon me?
We're at item 9.0.
Okay, our next meeting, Pam, is scheduled for?
I don't have it right here. Hold on. I believe it is April...
April the 12th, Pam. We have our Facilities and Finance at 4:30. And the next regular board meeting is scheduled for? Correct.
On a Monday? Wait, on a Monday?
Yes, no, it's Wednesday.
On Tuesday, April 24th, at 5:30 here in the boardroom. Prior to that, at 4:00 PM, we will have our Facilities and Finance Committee on April, Tuesday, April 24th.
Does that make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.